Please do that here amongst all of us. Thank you. All right, now let's move on. We'll start with... Yes, sir, Mr. Hanifin. Fifty-nine. If you want the count in here, Dan, you're gonna have to stand up and count them yourself. All right. Article twenty has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to transfer from the FY twenty twenty-three negotiated settlement account a sum of seventy-two thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars for the purpose of funding the approved collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Burlington and the Burlington Police Command Officers, FY twenty twenty-three, FY twenty twenty-four, and FY twenty twenty-five, same to be spent under the appropriate authority. Ways and Means, Mr. Moore, nice to see you back tonight.
Hello? Ways and Means voted unanimously to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, Mr. Sagarino. I'm awake, all right.
Moderator. The next two articles you'll be hearing are negotiated settlements, two contract settlements we were able to get prior to town meeting with our police groups. Collective bargaining is a very difficult process, not just for us, but also for our employees. It's very difficult, to say the least, if you've ever participated in it. I'd like to thank both groups for a very thoughtful discussion during the process, and I think it's been said many times before that you probably come to a fair deal when both sides walk away a little bit unsatisfied, and that's the case here. Negotiated settlements, there's no additional funds being appropriated with this. As you may recall, we had a budget during the budget discussion that was up six-hundred-and-twenty-one percent, and I told you that we'd be transferring money out of that. So these funds have already been appropriated in the budget. We're just looking for you to ratify the contract and allow us to transfer those funds into the police department budget. Urge your support of these two articles, and I'll now turn it over to Assistant Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator John D'Nizio to provide you with the details.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John D'Nizio, Assistant Town Administrator. I have a few slides for you to look at. Thank you, Amy. So I'm here to talk about Articles twenty and twenty-one. As the name suggests, these are articles to fund year one of the recently settled collective bargaining agreements at the police department. The administration and the union recently came to an agreement. The union's membership of both unions ratified the agreement. You heard that Ways and Means and Select Board both voted unanimously to support these articles. It's obviously not ideal for us to be coming to you and being in negotiations while town meeting is going on, and certainly would have preferred to have these done long ago and to be here with requests for all of our unions, but it just wasn't in the cards this year. So we'll continue to work hard and make progress with our other unions and hope to have contracts in front of you for the next time. As Mr. Sagarino pointed out, if you ask anybody that's been through the collective bargaining process, they'll probably tell you that it's difficult and sometimes infuriating. But I'd be remiss if I didn't take the time to thank everybody that's involved, both on our side, the union's side, for the willingness to talk, the willingness to listen, to do so in a respectful and productive way. That is, in fact, the spirit of negotiations, and I can echo Mr. Sagarino's sentiments to say thank you to all involved. Just a couple of quick slides, thank you, Amy. The first is Article twenty, which is to fund the command officers' contract. We have two unions amongst our sworn officers. This union covers the sergeants, lieutenants, and captains, and it's sixteen members. The agreement's for three years, year one being next year, FY twenty-three, followed by year two and three, obviously, twenty-four and twenty-five. These two proposals we have in front of you tonight are more simple than we're usually up here talking about. This includes a compensation package in the agreement with a wage adjustment of two-point-five percent in all three years, and there's also a change in the detail rate and stipend for the EMT certification, similar to what we have in the patrol contract. For the non-compensation package, we have some language changes and clarifications for overtime and court time, as well as union bereavement and sick leave. The clothing allowance has been eliminated in this contract and will be handled similar to the way we do the patrol union with the quartermaster system, so that the chief can control who wears what and when they replace it. Additionally, we were able to add some language for policies around the areas of cybersecurity and the body-worn camera policy, which was really the push on the administration and the union to continue to work hard to get this done by town meeting, to be able to take advantage of a grant of a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars that goes along with Article seven, capital item, to purchase those body-worn cameras. As the motion says, this is seventy-two thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars for the current year, and that's becoming from a transfer from the FY twenty-three negotiated settlement accounts. It's important to note that these articles are technically transfers, so there is no addition to the budget as submitted and approved last week. It doesn't increase our appropriation at all or decrease our reserves in any way. Articles... Should I do both, Mr. Moderator? Thank you. Article twenty-one is the other union contract for the sworn police officers. This is for patrol officers. This unit covers fifty members. Similar to the command contract, this is for three years, FY twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. The wage adjustment is the same at two-point-five percent in all three years. There's also a change in the detail rate and some targeted stipend increases for both year two and year three in the areas of education incentive and specialist titles. For the non-compensation package, we have updated the contract to include the federal Juneteenth holiday and added some language for transfers into the Department of existing certified police officers. Also added policies for both cybersecurity and body-worn camera surveillance patrol. The amount of this transfer is a hundred-and-twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars, again, coming from negotiated settlements, so not affecting the approved budget. That's all I have to say.
Okay, questions from the body on Article twenty? Mr. Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Cormier, Precinct Six. I've always had an issue with these things kind of being dropped on us the night that we're supposed to be voting on this. There's a reason why we get our packets two weeks in advance, and I understand the whole issue as far as negotiating, and sometimes we find that that may or may not be possible at the time. But to have something like this be presented to us tonight, I don't recall seeing anything like this that we were just shown on the screen. I've never liked it. It's not a matter of whether I agree with patrolmen's and the command's contract itself, but to ask us to digest this right on the spot, I don't think is acceptable. It never has been and never should be. And I think this body should really start demanding a little bit more rather than have something dropped on our laps at the last minute. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
Select Board meeting, a recommendation...
Mr. O'Brien, go ahead.
Yes? Okay, oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Patricia O'Brien, Precinct Two. I'm recalling some conversation at the Select Board meeting during the spring. A recommendation from the subcommittee... You can't hear me? Can people on WebEx hear me? People on WebEx can hear me.
Yes.
They can hear you.
How do I tell them?
Okay. Let's try now. Okay, why is that doing that? He's off, yeah. No.
Put her down, put him back on, and just ask her to speak again.
Pat, could you speak again? We weren't hearing you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Patricia O'Brien, Precinct Two. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you gotta speak, Pat.
We can hear you. I can hear you.
You can hear me on WebEx, but they can't hear me in the auditorium.
No, we can. Go ahead, switch him again. Okay.
We can hear you, Pat, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Patricia O'Brien, Precinct Two. I'm recalling some conversation at the Select Board meeting where the Subcommittee on Diversity expressed some interest in some language, and I'm just wondering if any of that language was brought forward to the table during the negotiation. It was wording related to discrimination policies. Maybe Chin, you're preached.
D'Nizio, Assistant. The answer to Mr. O'Brien's question. The DEI committee had recommended that we have an anti-discrimination policy in all of our union contracts, which we did. After speaking with them, we thought maybe we could change the command contract where it was and what it was. So in this contract, in... I'm sorry. In this agreement, we are adding the patrol language to the command contract. So the answer to Mr. O'Brien's question is yes. At the Subcommittee meeting, that recommendation was achieved.
Thank you, Mr. D'Nizio.
Ask her again.
Pat, did you have anything else?
No, just a thank you to Mr. D'Nizio.
Anything further from the body? Seeing none, let's hold on this. Paul, are we...
Yep, they're two separate ones.
This is just voting on Article twenty. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Forty-eight, four.
There being a clear majority in favor, this article passes. Let's move on to Article twenty-one. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to transfer from the FY twenty twenty-three negotiated settlement account the sum of one-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars for the purpose of funding the approved collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Burlington and the Burlington Police Patrolman's Association for FY twenty twenty-three, FY twenty twenty-four, and FY twenty twenty-five, same to be spent under the appropriate authority. All right, we've heard the presentation on it. Are there questions on this? Comments from the body? Seeing none, let's put this to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Fifty-four, two against.
There being a clear majority in favor of this article, passes. Article twenty-two has been withdrawn, as has Article twenty-three. So let's move on to Article twenty-four. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to accept from the trustees under the will of Marshal Simons in an amount of seventy-thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents for the improvement of Simons Park, same to be expended under the direction of the Recreation Commissioners. Ways and Means, please.
Ways and Means voted unanimously to accept money for the Simons Trust, from the Simons Trust.
You don't have to. Question from the body, Mr. Bell.
Mike.
Seventy-thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. The question was, what's the number? Anything further? Seeing nothing, let's vote. All those in favor of accepting money? All those opposed?
Okay. Poll was going up. Forty-nine, four, zero, against.
There being nobody voting against accepting money, this motion passes. Article twenty-five, Affordable Housing Coordination Services. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding Affordable Housing Coordination Services, same to be spent under the direction of the town administrator in coordination with the Housing Partnership Committee or to act in any other manner in relation thereto. Ways and Means, Mr. Moore.
Ways and Means voted thirteen, zero in favor.
Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In affordable housing, the town has done a really good job of creating affordable housing opportunities. Currently, about thirteen percent of our housing stock is considered affordable. That's very admirable for a Massachusetts municipality. One of the things we haven't done quite as good a job of is managing that affordable housing, and I think the program's gotten to the point now where it makes some sense for us to provide some resources for our affordable housing efforts. We sort of have a little bit of a unique funding source on this one in that you may notice it's a raise and appropriate. It's not a free cash ask. As you may recall from the budget video you saw three times on the first night, we do have a category called local receipts. Within local receipts, we collect funds from our building department, and as we were reviewing those fees earlier, a couple of months ago, a suggestion was made that we raise the demolition of a house fee from two-hundred dollars to a thousand dollars, thereby generating an additional eight-hundred dollars. And per discussion with the building department, we're averaging approximately fifty tear downs a year now. So if you multiply that out, fifty times eight-hundred dollars, we felt as though forty thousand dollars was a reasonable amount to start off, sort of to provide some assistance to the Housing Partnership Committee and the Select Board and the Planning Board and all of our departments that deal with affordable housing. So that's the presentation. I can gladly answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sagarino. Questions or comments from the body? Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Roger Bell, Precinct Six. So exactly, is this creating a position? Or how is this being dispersed? And what is the coordination we're talking about? You're talking about multiple departments here with some interlocking areas of service. So how does this all spell out? What are we looking at?
I do believe it will improve over time, but the current plan is to provide just some short-term temporary help to the Housing Partnership. They currently have a couple of initiatives going on, including a housing needs assessment. It's very data-intensive. We'd like to get, you know, basic organizational things done, all the files in the same area, all the relevant documents together. They've been sort of dispersed over time. Currently, what we're looking to do is to hire a independent contractor on an hourly basis to at least get started with that. And then, as the Housing Partnership moves forward in that process, they will have a better understanding as to make a recommendation to us as to what that position, how they envision it, to be most beneficial to their efforts.
Is there a specific department that they are going to be responsible to before it's disseminated?
The Housing Partnership is advisory to the Select Board.
Okay, thank you.
Online, Mr. Campbell.
Christopher Campbell, Precinct One. So I don't necessarily have any issue with the warrant article itself. It's more of the fee and how that has come about, going from two-hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. In Ways and Means, I raised the question of what our surrounding towns are doing. Lexington, Woburn, Billerica, they're doing a certain set price per one-thousand dollars assessed and are going to be taking in significant more revenue than we are or we could be doing. So I just encourage, when we're looking at these type of fee assessments and adjustments, we also look at what our surrounding towns are doing and stay competitive as such, because while it's great that we're going to potentially allocate this forty thousand dollars for a much-needed position, we could be allocating a lot more towards affordable housing.
Online, sign, 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 sign.
Say it again, sir.
Online.
Try it again.
Mr. Kaski, are you catching me?
Say it again.
I'm saying, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My question is for Mr. Sagarino, since he mentioned that there's fifty houses a year being torn down. Are those houses that are being replaced with these million-dollar homes?
Mr. Sagarino?
Mr. Moderator, I suspect the answer to that is yes.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Still want to talk?
Mr. Moore, 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 Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bruce Moore, Precinct One, to you, Paul. So this is not a full-time position, my first question. And second question, what's the revenue source in the future? Once, if we ever get to a point where there's no more tear downs or is it will just come to us each year or whenever funds are available for this type of initiative? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bruce, the intention is that this will be folded in. You'll see at the spot of the operating budget going forward, the revenue increase will be built into the local receipt. So we're at least at a breaking-even point when we start. You're not correct that at some point in the future, we may have less tear downs. At that point, it will just be part of our ordinary operating budget, funded through all revenues combined, like everything else.
Mr. Sinessi.
Adam Sinessi, Precinct One. So I like this revenue stream, but I'd rather see it used to go back into the community in ways of, you know, new police stations and the new school projects that we're taking on. We're meeting the state threshold. We're at thirteen percent. I'd prefer to take a market-driven approach to affordable housing.
Thank you, Mr. Sinessi. Further comments, questions from the body?
Nothing online.
Seeing none, let's put this to a vote. All those in favor?
Poll's going up.
Opposed? Thank you.
Fifty-four, three against.
There being a clear majority in favor, Article twenty-five passes. Article twenty-six, it has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of forty thousand dollars to pay for expenses associated with the annual Fourth of July parade, same to be spent under the direction of the town administrator in coordination with the Fourth of July Committee. Mr. Moore, Ways and Means, please.
Ways and Means voted thirteen, zero in favor.
Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, yeah, so forty thousand, typically, the Fourth of July Committee asks for twenty thousand, which traditionally has funded half of the expenses needed to cover the Fourth of July parade. This year, we are seeing and continually anticipating sponsors not being as giving as they have been in the past. And so we are asking town meeting to fund the entirety of the parade as well as the fireworks this year, with the hopes that moving forward next year, we can reestablish some relationships with our business partners in the community and only ask for twenty thousand within the year.
Was there a Select Board vote on this, please?
Yes, it was five, zero, zero in favor.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Disultate.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Merna Saum, Precinct Two. I would like to urge the body to approve this appropriation. There is nothing greater than marching in the Fourth of July parade through the streets of Burlington to see all the wonderful citizens, the children, the people who have their chairs, their umbrellas, their water stops. It really is a remarkable event. I've had the pleasure of doing this for the past several years with the Friends of the Library, the Friends of... Oh. John, wait a minute, wait a minute. Jonathan can help me. Jonathan can help me. With Cummings Park, yeah, in the Council on Aging. I get around. But the point is that the people, you really have to see them out there. They come out and it's a wonderful happening. So I urge you all to really vote them there from this appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you, Merna. And I don't think there was ever a question on whether you got around.
Yeah, put a stand on that one.
Thank you, Merna. It was... The Sickler?
Online? Okay.
Ms. Ting, Eileen Sickler, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. So in the past, we would get $20,000 from corporations because we asked them. And this year, we didn't ask them. I guess I'm not clear on that.
Mr. Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. No, Eileen, we are asking them. We are making the phone calls. So last year, we did the rolling rally. And we didn't have a lot of external participation. We didn't do the fireworks. There was a lot less expenses incurred. And so through the few donations that we were able to get, as well as what we had left in our account, we spent all down the rolling rally. So we're entering this year with $0 in the account. And the businesses that we've begun to speak to are not giving as much as or at all as they have in the past, many of whom are citing the last two years and just the impact. So what we're saying to them is, okay, we understand. You know, we appreciate that. We hope that we can come back to you next year and that you'll, you know, be a part of this one more time for us. But this year, we are not getting that. So yes, we are not getting the $20,000 that we normally get.
Okay, one more question, please. So how does the police detail and cross-charges and that sort of thing happen? Does the police department charge us? And then it just, is that part of the $40,000?
Yes. So $16,000 for the fireworks. I forget what the amount for the details are, but that's covered in there as well. And then for larger participants or performances, we do pay folks to come and be at the parade.
Thank you, Mr. Christian.
Further questions? Seeing none, let's put this to a vote. Anybody with a poll going out? Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
42, 4, 6 against.
There being a clear majority in favor, Article 26 passes. Article 27, historical shed. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $33,000 for the purpose of providing a storage shed at the West School property. Seemed to be spent under the direction of the town administrator in coordination with the Historical Commission who will act in any other manner in relation there too. Ways and Means?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ways and Means voted 11-3 in favor of this. That something, the votes, we're looking for alternate sources of funding, potentially under the CPA, if and when it were to pass here. Otherwise, those in favor felt that this was a needed shed that had been on the radar for some time. And the CPA seemed like it was a little too far away. So we should get this done. Thanks.
Mr. Sinessi, please. Capital Budget?
Capital Budget voted 3-2-1 on this. The prevailing wisdom was that for the programming with the Historical Commission to move forward and improve and expand, this is a key piece to the puzzle. Capital Budget went 3-2-1.
Thank you, Mr. Sinessi. Mr. Capola for the Historical Commission.
He was moderator, Peter Capola, Historical Commission. A member, an old issue, we meet tonight. Chairman, I'm making she's close contact, so she's home this evening. As Ways and Means said, this is something that goes back to 2015. It's kind of like the children movie, The Neverending Story. It's been on and off warrants several times last year. Well, the history is that in the fall of 2015, then-town manager, John Petrin, invited Chairman Mike Tredall myself to meet him at the Clark and Reed site. We met him there. He showed up, brought us to a corner of one of the buildings and pointed out all of the historical assets that we had stored there. And he said, get rid of them. And we looked at him, so what do you like us to do with it? Four months later, we got a call from Capital Budget Committee saying, please come and justify this shed that you have on the warrant. We said, what shed? So the Select Board had started some progress there. And over the last six years, they've been on the warrant, told, on, told. Last year, it was on again, and it was told with our agreement because of the budget constraints the town was working on there. But we came to you in January, we presented you with a master plan for all of the things that we would like to accomplish over the next few years in preparation for the town's 225th and the nation's 250th. And we pointed out that the thing that makes this all happen and fall into place is getting this shed built at the side of the West School. The shed would look just like a reproduction of the blacksmith shop that was on the Town Commons in the 1800s, early 1900s. And it will store a number of artifacts that are in the basement of the museum, on the Florida Museum, and in storage at the ISO container now currently have been overlooked. By creating that additional floor space on the museum, we can take other artifacts out of collections and put them on display. And we also now have an area that we can store artifacts until we make decisions on whether or not to keep them or to restore them and put them on display. I know some questions that people had were, we had a bunch of junk. And in their current state, we wouldn't argue with that. But a couple of years ago, we received a Victorian-era occasional table, 1880s. It was part of the Charlie Cassar estate. When it came to us, it was in about two dozen pieces. The only thing that was solid was the marble top. We had it restored for $350. It's on display now. It's worth about $4,500. So to the typical person looking at that at front, they would have said, why are you taking that photo away? We don't want it. But now, it's probably one of the most valuable assets that we have on display in the museum. That, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Capola. Questions from the body? Online, Mr. Kaski?
Gary Kasky, Precinct Six. Can you describe some of the articles that you want to have stored? Just so we know what type of articles they are. And also, can you tell the body, just how many people visit that museum on a daily basis?
First, we have a blacksmith kiln and a large anvil that's sitting in the one of the restrooms in the basement of the museum. That would be on prominent display. We have a hay cutter that is related to the hay rake that is currently in the meadow at the Grandview Farm. That would be on display. The barb that's on the floor of the museum that goes back to the bicentennial, I think it was built by the Rotary. That really should not be in the museum, and it's more associated with the West School. So that would go over to the West School. We found a plumber's site box, which is the size of a desk, 30, 50, by 30 inches. That would go on display and I know off the museum floor. And we have artifacts that still are waiting for an area like... If we should ever get a room at the Grandview Farm, we had bedroom stuff, beds, cradles, things like that that would go on display there. We have a desk that we'd like to get out of the basement and put on display. We have a growler, a crank growler that would be kind of nice to put on display. So we have a lot of artifacts that have value and are all related to the town and the town's history. We just need the space to do that. I will point out, I heard this argument earlier at Town Meeting, and I agree with the Town Meeting members who say you shouldn't make comparisons with other towns. But go to other towns, you'll find that they have the equivalent of the Grandview Farm and barn. Where all we have is the school. We don't have any other areas to store or display artifacts. Wilmington, right on 62. You'll see they have a big house and a detached barn. Belareka, right off Town Common, has a large house and a detached barn. All we have is the museum. We don't have any other places to display our store items.
And my other question was, how many people visit that museum on a daily basis?
Say it again.
Mr. Kaski, anything further?
Mike, yes. The answer to my other question, how many people visit that museum on a daily basis?
Museum is open whenever anybody requests. On a typical day during the summer, we get about a dozen people. On an event like next Saturday, if the museum were to be open, we'd get about 150 people. But the museum is open, just like any other community. The museum is open anytime that somebody makes a request to come to it. We're not, this is not Museum of Science. It's a local town historical museum.
I just want, in my opinion, Burlington is not a historical town. Burlington is not a Lexington or a Concord. I have nothing further.
Seeing nothing? There we go. Excuse me. We're up at the back. Spender gas. Is that who you are?
Michelle Prendergast, Precinct Five. I'm just trying to picture, would the shed go directly behind the West School? And is there enough space? I'm just trying to picture the overlay.
25 feet back of the West School so that the school bus can drive in between the school and the shed. It'll sit lower than either of the ranch homes that are on either side of it. And it would be smaller and still be ranch-style home. So architecturally, it's the same as the houses that are already there, just sitting a little bit lower and a little bit further back. And it meets all zoning requirements, including sideline by over five feet. So it's 20 feet of sideline versus the minimum, which is 15 feet. So the only reason for even fully affirmative is because we need to bring electricity to it. But that meets all zoning requirements.
Anything further from anyone? Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roger Bell, Precinct Six. You just brought up that you're going to need electricity there. Is that also figured in to 33?
Yes, we were pulling the power from the school. So it's running a line from the school to the shed and the components of the build to install that are picked in into 33,000.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing nothing, let's vote? We have a poll to go out in?
Polls going out.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed?
44, 8 against.
There being a clear majority in favor, Article 28 passes. That was Article 27, excuse me. Now we'll go Article 28. Article 28, regarding 119 South Bedford Road, it has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to transfer from Affordable Housing Fund the sum of $350,000 as necessary to exercise its first right of refusal and purchase 119 South Bedford Street, and then to authorize the Select Board to sell the same upon terms and conditions which they determine to be most advantageous to the town as an affordable housing unit, who will act in any other manner in relation there too. Ways and Means?
The Ways and Means voted 12-1-0 in favor of this. We would like to see our local house stocks stay healthy and relevant. And we felt that it was important for the town to explore the opportunities with this house and to have an opportunity to come up with a policy that would apply to all the other potential houses that would come up in the upcoming years to come up with a plan for how to handle this. There was one opposing vote, but I'm...
President Six, I did vote negative. And it's because I think we have constrained ourselves considerably in the types of affordable housing we're trying to provide. And I think that while we can study this and have a more global view in the future, it seems hard to imagine that single-family housing is the best way to provide affordable housing because it is so expensive. But in the momentum we have and the constraints that we have and the intent currently of the Housing Partnership, I think it's going to be wash. We're going to buy it. We're going to decide what to do with it later. And I wish for a strategy. I'm sure that we will have one. I don't think we can go very wrong, but I definitely do want to encourage us to develop that.
Mr. Sagorino, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think that was a pretty good synopsis given by the Ways and Means. This warrant was discussed pretty thoroughly at the Housing Partnership Committee, the Select Board, and at Ways and Means. I think, I don't want to speak for anybody, but this is an ownership unit on South Bedford Street. So a private person owns this home right now. They have a deed restriction on the property. It gives the town the first right of refusal to purchase it at a certain price in the event that they wish to sell. And there's a couple of different options that were discussed as to what could potentially happen with this property. But I think that I speak for almost most parties when all of us sort of agree that it makes sense for us to exercise that first right of refusal so that we have some more time in order to develop a plan as to how do we save this affordable housing unit. And lastly, the funding source is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
A vote of the Select Board, Mr. Sagorino?
3, 1, and 1 abstention.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Ms. Willard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct Four. I have two questions. One, do we have an estimate on how much it's going to cost to fix up the house, to make it viable? I've heard rumor that there's asbestos there.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We had the building inspector do a home inspection. Let me give you a little background, first of all. We're talking about the 12 former military houses along South Bedford Street that were declared surplus in the mid-1990s and offered to the town at a discounted price. The program has been very successful. Most of the folks who are living there today are the original... Most of the folks who are living there today are the original buyers. And that's what we have here. We've got the seller has been there for twenty-five years. They raised their children and their grandchildren. And, you know, they're getting a little older, time to move on. So they notified the town of their interest to sell. We did do a, a, a home inspection and as we suspected, there's asbestos in that, in that house. And in fact, there's asbestos in all of the houses there. It's also sixty years old. It needs some, needs some, some repairs and some, some updates to make it saleable to a first time home buyer. We've got, we've received estimates from the building inspector of between seventy-five and one hundred thousand dollars to complete the asbestos abatement and make necessary repairs.
Thank you. And my, my second question is, this says it was submitted at the request of the Affordable Housing Committee. Do you, should this say actually the Housing Partnership Committee? I, I wasn't sure we had an Affordable Housing Committee.
Okay, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, Mr. Runyon.
Okay. We have a. Affordable Housing. Committee, right? So we are affordable housing committee. We're sort of, we're an advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen. We're sort of hastily established in the early nineteen nineties when the, when the first forty B came to Burlington. So we haven't been very active typically over the years unless another forty B or some development comes forward. And committee is assembled and help offer opinion to the, to the Board of Selectmen. The last twelve or eighteen months, however, the committee has been very aggressive. We've got, we have many new members. We've been meeting monthly, if not more so. We're currently undertaking a housing needs assessment that I hope you all participated in. We're working with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and I think that's going to produce a document. In the big summer that we can use as a, as a tool going forward to address exactly what our housing needs are in its community. We've been making a lot of assumptions over the last twenty-five years. But this is going to give us some, some actual data that we can draw on.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Mr. De Tucci.
Battery's dead. Casper's battery's dead, would you get it?
Do you have spare batteries? Kate, take the spare battery. Okay. Hold on just a second. Now go.
Good, good.
Go ahead, Dan.
Hello, can you hear me? Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jan De Tucci, Precinct six. Mike, this, this unit that we're buying, is this the unit that had the big rehab done to it? No, okay, it's not that one. We're paying three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy the house? I didn't follow this.
We use a calculation based on a D H C D formula of a maximum allowable resale value. And that's where we come up with the price of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We do the same thing over at Grandview when those turn over, we use the same formula.
Okay, so roughly, what did these people pay for this house twenty or twenty-five years ago?
I, they paid ninety-five thousand, but I don't know the necessarily germane.
Okay, so if you're relating it to Grandview, for some reason, I thought that they were limited on how much money they could sell these homes for. Because they got them for, you know, well below market value. But it seems to me like they're selling the house to the town for a hefty profit. But is that some sort of a guideline that has to be followed?
It, it's the maximum allowable sale price according to the D H C D guide, D H C D guidelines. That the deed writer imposes. We all know the, the escalating real estate values in Burlington. So eighty percent of area, area meeting, median home prices, three eighty-five is well below the, the median home price in Burlington of roughly seven hundred thousand dollars.
Right. And, and I agree with you. Only, the only reason why I'm questioning this is because these are affordable houses that were given to the town. And then were sold to people at a very, very reasonable cost. What did, what you estimating the cost to renovate this house to make it livable?
According to the building inspector, between seventy-five and one hundred thousand.
So that means we're going to be into this house for four hundred and fifty thousand, maybe?
Four, four thirty-nine, if, if that now, I, you know, I'd like to.
Right.
We could sell it for three thirty-five, the maximum allowable sale price, or we could absorb the cost of the, the repairs. Or we sell it for what we have into a four thirty-five.
So if, if you think we're going to decide to keep it. And then we are going to be renting it out? Or we're just going to flip it?
I, I don't like that word flip.
No, I mean, are we?
Certainly not what we have in mind for that house.
Are we going to be keeping this home in the town of Burlington as far as for its affordable housing? That, are we going to?
That's our goal. If we don't, if we don't buy this house tonight, the seller is allowed to sell it and it, and the deed restriction goes away and we lose it from our inventory.
All right, I guess I'm just worried about how much we can get for rent in order so we can get some of our money back on it. On an individual home, it doesn't make any difference, just that this is being financed by the taxpayers. Where other homes in town are not being financed.
This is, this is from the Affordable Housing account, which is money that we've.
Okay, so we have.
Developers or through monitoring agreements and so forth. There's no tax, there's no taxpayer money involved.
That makes sense, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sherry Ellis, Town Meeting Member, Precinct three. And I was at the Ways and Means meeting this evening, and I've attended many of the Housing Partnership Committee meetings as well. And I have some concerns about this project. This is one of, as Mr. Runyon said, twelve homes. I believe we've already lost one of them, so we're down to eleven. One seventeen South Bedford Street was already taken care of and kept as an affordable unit. And we now are looking to purchase this. Affordable Housing Fund is somewhere around a million dollars right now, asking for three hundred and fifty thousand for this. Perhaps another up to a hundred thousand dollars or more or less from that fund as well to take care of one home. Of which we're not sure because we haven't heard the results from the Housing Needs Assessment. If single family homes are really what this town needs for affordability. So I have a concern about that, that we're going to spend more than a third of our fund for affordable housing and any other projects that we'd like to do with that. There are nine other homes that are potentially going to come to the market soon. And there's not a plan for that. So there's a lot of unanswered questions and we're taking a lot of money out of this affordable fund. For affordable housing, certainly. I think we need to be smart about it. I think there needs to be a plan and, and we don't have one at the moment. And that's a real concern to me, so thank you.
Moderator, John Eiler, Precinct six. We did spend quite a bit of time on this at Ways and Means, just because it is a little more complicated than it first appears. I, I think there's two competing things going on here. One was that because there are a lot of options involved with this house. And limited time to exercise the town's right of first refusal, there is concern that we hadn't, hadn't had appropriate time to think through where our exact strategy is. In the end, I, I think where we all ended up is that it made sense to buy this using the Affordable Housing Trust. So that we had the potential to keep the house, our affordable housing stock. If we decide that in the end, and single family housing isn't the right way to provide affordable housing or most cost effective way to do it. The town can then turn around and sell it if they wish. The house has been appraised at, it was five seventy-five, five eight, five hundred eighty-five thousand. So there's basically zero risk of losing money on this deal. If we decide that this is not the right thing for our stock, we can turn around and sell it. Miss Ellis is correct that we're using, you know, an interesting fraction of the trust right now. But that isn't forever. The house, I, I think there's a lot of appetite for renting it. So the likelihood is that it will either be sold as an affordable house, in which case we'll basically get, recoup most of that money and put it back in the trust. For no net change. Or we'll sell it at market rate, in which case we'll, we'll bump up the trust by one or two hundred K. And so the intent is not that we're going to buy this and hold it for, you know, four years and have that money sucked out of the trust. It would be a relatively, you know, less than a year kind of commitment for that money. So I, I don't think that's a big issue. And the advantage of the town acquiring this, it gives us the potential of keeping it in stock. And just as importantly, it gives the town time to carefully consider what is that we really want to do with this house before it disappears and we don't have an option. So that's why, after being this probably for a couple hours, I unanimously agreed that it made sense to buy it. Thank you.
Twelve, one, zero.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Webb, Precinct seven. Just to follow up on that. Other than these former Nike houses, nine or ten or eleven that are available to us as a portable housing. Are there any other single family units in town? That are in this group or that the town owns?
The Housing Authority owns two single family homes and a condo at, over at Walmart. They've had those for thirty-five years or so. Oh, there are a couple of forty B developments.
I know, forty B, yes, right. But I'm aiming towards just asking about single family.
No, just, just the, just the two that the House and Authority has in addition to our, our eleven.
Okay, I'd like to point out that the upcoming possible availability of funds for this, this sort of thing would come from the CPA. Which we'll be discussing in an article coming up. Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Linton, Precinct one. So just looking at the deed, first off, the deed writer was never recorded. But also, do we have an official Burlington Housing Authority? Is that a separate entity from the town at this time?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Just, I'm just concerned about some of the title issues that might be involved in this, but otherwise I'm, I'm fine with it. Do we have any plans from a buyer perspective as far as how we would approach that? I know there can be a lot of curative issues, but that obviously can be on the seller's side. So what's our timeline here and how are we planning on addressing that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Let me first address the issue of title. Town Council has reviewed the title for, for this property and it's absolutely transferable, no question in her mind. On that. I'm sorry, the second part of your question, Michelle, I'm sorry. According to the deed restriction, we have one hundred and twenty days. Once we're notified by the seller, accompanied by a, by a certified appraisal to either exercise our right of first refusal or allow the seller to sell a house. We were first notified in March, so the clock started ticking in March. We have approximately ninety days to make the decision one way or the other.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct one. I think affordable housing is clearly a need for this community. I know we're officially over the ten percent defined of affordable housing, but some of that, although it's called affordable, really is not. I think the plan, we need a plan for advancing our affordable housing. I think it should be a mix of some single family houses. This town was built on single family houses. You know, a first time home buyer could move in, buy a house and then raise a family. And, and build up some equity and some, some ability to establish themselves. So I would like to see more of this type of investment in affordable housing, where we do protect some of our single family housing stock. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, from Precinct three. So twenty years ago, I was able to purchase one of these houses on South Bedford Street. Fortunately, that's three houses ago, but it was a great start in the community for myself, my family. There for four years, very nice houses, great property. I was able to sell the house with that D rider, D rider without any issues. And certainly I would support this article as some other family or person have talked. Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Tabona, Precinct three. I just wanted to let everyone know, the same thing happened last year with the house next door to it. The town was able to successfully purchase it, renovate it and sell it to another buyer. So this is, this isn't something out of the norm for everyone to do. I think it's a great idea for us to do it. And that's all I have.
Point of information.
Oh, yes.
Point of information, Mr. Moderator.
Got to raise your hand, Gary.
Mr. Moderator, I, you're coming across very muffled. I can't even understand what you're saying.
The Ways and Means voted twelve, one in favor of this. The majority of us appreciate the, the sculpture park for what it is and, and we're bringing in families to, once, when they come to the Town Common to, to visit it. Something about that just wasn't proper use of taxpayer money.
Voted one in favor, four against, one abstention. We were somewhat confused by this and to get into the nuance of what we do, anything that is, anything that, the way that I tell people what we do in capital budget is anything that you can touch is what we deal in. So we don't really deal in employee budgets or budgets for departments or anything like that. It's a new vehicle. It's a piece of equipment. And a lot of times, as you saw the other night, it's playgrounds. So we approach this like a park or a playground. But when we sort of peel the onion back on it, there's a component about this that has to do with purchase of new sculptures for the park. And we really don't have an opinion on that, to be perfectly honest with you. If people like it, that's great. If people don't, that's fine, too. What we got into is that when we peeled the onion back on this is that this piece of property is actually maintained by another department in town. I believe it's the Rec Department. And part of what they're asking for in this warrant is to fix the entryway and to make some basic changes to the playground for safety reasons. And we agree with that those issues should be addressed. We would prefer to see it done within the parameters of the department that oversees it, which in this instance would keep the cost of this initiative below the threshold of fifteen thousand dollars that is anything that we kick the tires on. We don't touch anything that's lower than fifteen thousand dollars. Our general assessment is that, again, we'd rather see this managed by the department responsible for that parcel, and we just would rather not see capital requests related to the Sculpture Park as a general rule.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me? No. Is that better? Okay, thank you. I am Barbara Larue. I am a member of your planning board and the current chair of the Burlington Sculpture Park. I was here in January, so I'm going to try and run through this presentation quickly because I know you're all familiar. But I did want to point out that this logo here was designed by Burlington, two Burlington High School students. We have been working very closely with the school throughout this whole process. Next, I have a timeline for you, just quickly to remind people how we got here. The Sculpture Park Committee was formed in two thousand nine. It came about partly as a result of the master plan, when people expressed the need and the desire for more cultural opportunities in town. In summer of two thousand twenty, we had our first installation, and we are currently working on our second installation. We have already received feedback from Burlington High School and Burlington Elementary School students. They have gone through the submissions and submitted to us what their favorites are, and the committee will be making selections for the next installation within a couple of weeks, and those will be installed in the summer. Over the past two years, we have had a lot of events at the park, and the park has really become part of the fabric of this community. It has been widely and enthusiastically embraced. We currently have seven sculptures there, six from our original installation, and an additional one, the Lovebirds, that was donated by a resident Maureen Wall in honor of her parents. Many of those will go away this summer because they were leased, and they'll be replaced by new sculptures to keep everything fresh and exciting. As mentioned, we've had a number of very successful and exciting events at the park this past fall. We had performing art at the park, where again, we had Burlington High School students from band and chorus performing along with the red trousers. We had about two hundred and fifty people attend that event. We had a very successful holiday sing-along at Grandview Farm with about fifty people attending, and again, Burlington High School students performing. We had almost a thousand people participate in our dog naming contest. The winning name was Havoc, which is after the retired police dog that you can see in the picture there. And we've also had a lot of press, in the local press, but also in the Boston Globe. And that's indicative of the fact that this is something very unique and something that a lot of other communities are interested in and many are even emulating. We recently heard through the New England Sculpture Association that the town of Watertown has reached out to them because they want to do the same thing there that we've done here. There is value in it. More recently, many of you probably heard that we had a fundraising event to purchase the Big Yellow Cherries, also known as global warming. And I think a wonderful example of how the community feels about the park is that we posted on Facebook, on the Burlington residents' page, that we were looking for donations for this sculpture. We got our first donation in three minutes. Three days later, we had the money to purchase the sculpture. A hundred and twenty-eight residents and four businesses pitched in for that. And we actually just had another event just this past Saturday where we dedicated that statue, and it was also very well attended, and it was a beautiful, inspiring event. The Sculpture Park has also been embraced by our business community. And you can see that we've had donations from a lot of local businesses. They see the value in this. They know that their employees want to come to a town that has diverse cultural opportunities, great restaurants, parks, entertainment, and things like this park. Their employees like it, therefore the businesses like it, and they are investing in it. However, just like you heard from the select board about the parade and other initiatives in town, it's been a couple of years for a lot of businesses, and we can't keep going back to the same well over and over again, looking for more money. Over the past two years, the Sculpture Park has proven itself to be a valuable asset to this town. And so now we're coming to the town, asking the town to invest in it as well. And this is our request. We have about sixteen thousand dollars still in our account from our own fundraising. We're looking for twenty thousand dollars, and it will be spent as follows. We will lease new sculptures for the next two years for about twelve thousand five hundred dollars. We would like to purchase one of the sculptures, one of the remaining sculptures, and move it to a permanent location, a location that we will find in conjunction with the select board. We would work with them to select the appropriate location. The bulk of the money would go toward improving and repairing the entrance to the park. Anyone who's been there knows that it is rough and uneven and not friendly for anyone who has mobility issues at all. We want to smooth that out, make it ADA compliant, and include a path to a bench so that everyone can enjoy this park. It's something that everyone in our community should be able to enjoy, even if they have mobility challenges. If there was any money left over after that, we would like to repair the stone wall. Some of the stones are falling down into the sidewalk. And perhaps we might plant some drought-resistant plants. If there's any money left over after that, which I actually don't think will happen, but if it did, we would use that money for future events the way we have in the past. So in summary, I'm asking for your vote tonight for the twenty thousand dollars. The Sculpture Park has been widely and enthusiastically embraced by both our residents and our business community. It will pay dividends because it will attract economic development in town. Businesses like this, it's good for them, it's good for their employees. And this distinguishes Burlington from other towns. It's another asset to be leveraged to increase cultural diversity in town. And I think it has proven itself to be a very valuable asset over the past two years. So I'm asking for you to support this article, and I'd be happy to take any questions you may have. Mr. Moderator, would you like me to stay here or answer questions down there? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm in Precinct Four. Is this going to be the permanent location? I hear these rumors that, I don't know, it's going to be moving because it's because it has to.
Well, that's a very good question, but I don't actually have an answer for you. It is my hope and the hope of the committee that this would be a permanent location, but it is not our decision to make. That would be a decision for the select board. I will be going to the select board, or the committee will be going to the select board to discuss that and ask to make this, if not permanent, perhaps more long-term in the near future. But it is a question I can answer for you. Everything that is in the park can be removed if necessary, except for the stone benches.
And do you expect this to be recurring for every other year or something like that?
I don't actually know. We are hoping that in the future, we might be able to get funding from CPA, but we don't know if that will happen. We intend to continue fundraising as we have all along. So I can't really say. It was suggested when we went to Ways and Means that perhaps this should be part of the operating budget. But again, I don't think that's a decision that I can make.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct Six. I have a few concerns with this money going forward, namely, the question as far as, you know, the permanent placement of this park. And to me, it would sound very foolish for us to allocate money to do all those type of preparations and smoothing out and benches and everything else, only to find that this park would be moved. So I'm very uneasy with authorizing any type of money without those type of guarantees that that park isn't going to be there for the near future anyways. Also concerned with the lack of whether this is going to be a reoccurring type of an item that we're going to be seeing year after year. So along with the Preservation Act, there seems to be too many moving parts to this at the moment. So I'm a little bit hesitant as far as voting for this at this time, until we start getting some, maybe some more concrete answers, you know, to some of the questions that we have. I just think for right now, you know, it's another three months or so with, you know, for the next, you know, four months for the next town meeting, I think we should, you know, hear from the Preservation Act, whether, you know, where that goes. I'd like to hear from the select board and what their decision may or may not be for this particular park. Until we get some, a little bit more solid answers, I can't support this at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, may I respond?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So to answer some of those questions. So when the Sculpture Park Committee came before the select board two years ago, we approved it conditionally that in two years' time, it would come back to us and give us a readout of how successful the park had been. Along the way, we've been able to see their successes, and we've been generally in support of everything they've been doing. We have not taken an official vote, just to be very clear. But we have discussed at a couple prior meetings the possibility of extending the park along with the campus front of Town Hall Building. So some of the smaller sculptures that we purchased or have been donated, whether or not we maintain a full park at its current location, we will find homes in the Town Common for them. I know that doesn't give an exact one hundred percent answer to your question, but we haven't thus heard the final report or taken a vote, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Fair questions, John. The select board has been generally, as Mr. Priest said, very supportive of the park. We do intend to stay for at least two years because we have moved forward and we're leasing new sculptures for two years. The CPA is a great source, and I think we will be coming to them, going to them for funding. But to wait for that would mean that this would stall. It would mean we couldn't continue with a very successful park that has brought a lot to this community. And if we lose momentum, if we stop and wait another two or three years before the CPA comes through, it's hard to get it started up again. We've got something really good going here, and we need to keep the momentum and keep it moving. I can't answer the question as to whether or not we'll be back every year. I don't think that that should prevent you from voting for this, because the reason I can't answer that question is because I'm hoping that I'm going to be really successful raising money without asking you for it.
Hi, Nikki Cadillac, Precinct Six. I hope that was me that you called on. We cannot hear, Mr. Moderator. We can hear every speaker except for you. And we did not hear on WebEx or BCAT what the result of that last vote was. So if you could clarify, and if there's a way to fix your sound so that we can hear you, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, all of that. Can you hear me now? Now, what are we missing?
Those of us on BCAT and WebEx did not hear the vote for the last warrant article. I didn't have anything else to say about this one.
Majority, and it was a clear two-thirds.
Thank you.
Online, Mr. Fristachi.
I would like to speak in support of this warrant article. And I would like to urge the selectmen to make this a permanent fixture in Burlington. I have been at a number of these events. The one that happened Saturday was a tremendously moving event. And to have Can you hear me? To have a Sculpture Park, which involves all of the students in the school district, seems like the kind of partnership that we want to encourage. I'm getting a lot of feedback. I'm not sure if you're all able to hear me.
I could hear you.
Okay, good. Thanks. So I think the fact that we have the president of the New England Association of Sculpture here, who has worked closely with the students, and the students are, you know, our art program, we fund very well, and this is a way to give our students and the rest of our community a way to, you know, live art day-to-day in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fristachi. Other questions from the body? Mr. Sacks?
Thanks, John Sacks, Precinct Seven. I just want to point out that I'm a very big fan of the Fourth of July Parade. I looked at the Friends of Mary Cummings Park a number of years before the trustees took over the park. In fact, we won the best, the best exhibit. We're spending forty thousand dollars for one day. I love the Fourth of July Parade. But the Sculpture Park is there every day, every single day. Twenty thousand, even if it was annual, represents one dollar for every citizen per year. That's what we're asking for. Should it become permanent, but right now, we're just asking for one dollar per citizen for that Sculpture Park. And I do love the Fourth of July Parade.
Mr. Dicucci.
Stand to Tucci, Precinct Six. The Fourth of July Parade is so we don't forget. I do support the park. Barbara's done a lot of work. I've been down there a few times. There's no reason why we can't keep it at that location. I don't see any office buildings going on, municipal property. I don't see anything going there. So there's no reason why the select can't make a commitment. For at least twenty thousand for the next two years, we'll give them a chance to make those decisions. Thank you.
Anything further? Mr. Coppola.
Peter Coppola, Historical Commission. Dan, you're wrong. First of all, the Historical Commission is, supports- Dan, you're wrong. The, well, first of all, the Historical Commission is, supports Sculpture Park. In theory, the location is wrong. The reason it's wrong is that this town meeting, when it approved the Grand View Fund PDB, specifically said that the meadow could only be used for agricultural and horticultural purposes. That is something that the Historical Mission is, Commissioner has been trying to do for the last couple of years. We wanted to turn that land and create some historical gardens, a Native American garden, a, a market garden, a colonial garden. In addition, the PDD use table specifically says that a art gallery is not allowed. This is a specific no for that parcel of land. So as much as we support the sculptures, we don't support them in that location. We think there were better locations around town where they could be put on display. That by the way, was the opinion of the building inspector who is, is based, depends on zoning laws. So he determined that the Sculpture Park should not be there.
Is that fair? Yes. I'm not aware of any decision by the building inspector. That is news to me. I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Capola's reading of the bylaw. This is not a gallery. A gallery would imply a building where artwork is available for sale to patrons. And that's not what this is. It is an outdoor exhibit and it is temporary in nature because most of the pieces are leased. So I respectfully disagree and I will have to check with our building inspector because no one has ever told me that he made any such ruling. Thank you.
Mr. Capola, I think we've, we've covered this point already. Your point was made. Thank you. Unless you have something different. Thank you. Mr. Dzutchi has something different?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Dan Dzutchi, Precinct Six. I just thought that all of the municipal property is in the custodians, it's the selection of the custodians of all municipal property. This is municipal property. So if it was not able to have a, a sculpture park there, they would have brought that up at the time.
Mr. Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct Six. Anyone from the building department here tonight? Because it seems to be an awful lot of back and forth as far as who's right, who's wrong. I'd rather hear from someone definitively on this. We historically have been awful in the way of PDDs and allowing stuff to happen that shouldn't. And making all kinds of variations to PDDs over the years. We actually had something before us a few years back to tighten that up because we got sick and tired of it. So I would like to get at least a definitive answer one way or another. Thank you.
Moderator through you. I did have an email exchange with Mr. Capola regarding the use of the, the area for Grand View. And reading the Grand View PDD, it's more prone to agriculture and horticulture than it is to a sculpture park. I didn't make an official determination, but that was an email exchange, or I did make an opinion.
Mike.
I, I don't recall.
The Sculpture Park Committee was not copied on any of that correspondence.
Mr. Moderator through you. That was an exchange, that was an exchange through me and Mr. Capola.
Mr. Cormier.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. If that's the case, and I, I really would like to see this body postpone this until next town meeting, until we can get some other definitive answers, because this is, this, this really bothers me when it comes to PDDs. It, it also kind of bothers me that we talk about this not being permanent. Yes, it being permanent. No, it's not a gallery. It's a temporary space, even though stuff is permanently there. I mean, it sounds like we're splitting hairs with some of this stuff. I, I, I don't like it. It, it's like a holding cage versus a, a prison. We went through all that mess a few years ago, too. I, I just don't like this. We're not getting the answers that we need to, and I don't think it's necessary to be voting on this regardless of the amount of money. I don't care if it's 50 cents per resident. I don't think we should be spending money if it is not allowable under the PDD.
Online. Mr. Kaski.
Yeah, well, is there going to be a motion to postpone this then?
Question on the floor at the moment. Mr. Michael Laskowski, please.
Amanda Laskowski, Precinct One. I'd like to move the question, please.
Question has been moved. Is there a second on that? All those in favor of moving the question? Okay, opposed?
Thirty-seven, remove the question with sixteen to none.
There'd be a clear two thirds majority in favor of moving the question. We'll put this to a vote. Amy, do you have a poll?
Poll is going out.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Thirty-nine, four, thirty, against.
If you're being a clear majority in favor, this motion passes. Thirty-nine, thirteen. Article thirty, Consumer Price Index Adjustment for the Elderly. Motion has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant. Ways and Means Committee, please. Mr. Moran.
The Ways and, the Ways and Means voted thirteen, zero in favor of this.
Thank you. Mr. Sagrino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted five, zero in favor of this. This is just, the Board of Assessors is bringing to us a couple of options to try to increase property taxes exemptions for the elderly and the needy.
Thank you, Sagrino. Questions from the body? Seeing none? Let's put this to a vote.
Poll is going out.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Forty-seven, four, zero, against.
If you're being a clear majority in favor, Article thirty passes. Article thirty-one. Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant. Mr. Moran, please.
Ten, zero in favor of this. Ways and Means voted thirteen, zero in favor of this.
Thank you. Mr. Sagrino, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted five, zero in favor. Again, this is another option to try to increase opportunities to provide relief to taxpayers brought forward by the Board of Assessors.
Thank you, Mr. Sagrino. Questions from the body? Seeing none? Amy, do we have a poll?
Going out.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Forty-one, four, zero, against.
If you're being a clear majority in favor, Article thirty-one passes. Article thirty-two. Adopting the Community Preservation Act in Burlington. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as presented in the Mr. Ball, to present on behalf of the Community Preservation Act Group.
Give us a minute here.
Are we ready?
Mr. Ball, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. We're all gathered here tonight for the same reason. Every single one of us. Not just the town meeting members, but everyone in this room, everyone at home. We're here for a single purpose, and that is to take care of Burlington. To make sure that we maintain the quality of life in this town, and perhaps even make it a little bit better. That's our goal. And I'm going to explain to you how the Community Preservation Act has been designed to do exactly that. I will be describing how a small change in real estate tax can lead to a real positive change in our community. It's a somewhat complex issue, so I will be going into some detail. Hopefully, we'll be answering questions before they are asked and limiting discussion that way after the fact. It's important to remember that we are not asking town meeting to approve the Community Preservation Act. You don't have that authority. The Act requires that you vote to put it forward to the election in November. This is the first time the CPA has ever appeared at town meeting in Burlington, and the first time it will appear on the ballot if it goes forward that far. The Community Preservation Act was enacted in 2000 by then Governor Salucci. The state realized that property taxes traditionally fund the day-to-day operating expenses of a community, but until the CPA enacted, there was no steady funding source for preserving and improving a community's character and quality of life. We've seen that in our very town meeting so far, this, this, this town meeting. The vast majority of our town budget is spent on police, fire, EPW, schools, retirement funds, healthcare plans for employees. Very little is left over for anything else, a very small percentage. So the CPA was crafted to encourage towns to fund projects in specific areas. Open space, recreation, affordable housing, and historical preservation, because these projects enrich the quality of life in our communities. How does the state get funding to support the CPA? It imposes a fee on all real estate transactions that are filed with the Registry of Deeds. Residential, commercial, purchases, sales, other transactions that have to be registered with a deed. Each one of those transactions typically has a $50 fee attached to it. All the communities in Massachusetts are doing this since this was enacted in 2000. Burlington's been paying into this fund as well. These funds go into the Community State Preservation Trust Fund. Burlington has been paying these fees since 2000, and we will continue to do so with all of our real estate transactions. The only way we can take money out of the, of the Community Preservation Trust Fund is to become a CPA community. And to do that, two things are required. First, it must be voted by the community, and that's what we're asking you, town meeting members, to vote to do this evening. And second, it is required to become a CPA community that you apply a small surcharge to residential and commercial real estate taxes. So the state has the CPA Trust Fund. We would have funds collected from a small local real estate surcharge. At the end of each fiscal year, the state looks to see how much money the community has put into that fund, and then they match a percentage of it. If we had been members in CPA in 2001, that match would have been 40%. It's a 40% return on investment. That's not too shabby. Let's talk about that surcharge. The Act allows a surcharge of up to 3%. We're proposing a surcharge of one and a half percent. That is by far the most popular number amongst the 189 communities that are CPA members in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So what would that mean to our taxpayers? Using FY22 data that I got from our town appraiser, Paul Tierney, a couple of weeks ago, the average single-family house in Burlington is currently assessed at $600,000. A one and a half percent surcharge would generate about a $75 increase in real estate tax. Your $1,500 quarterly tax bill would become 1,518. A small increase. However, we realize that even a small increase may be a challenge to some of our fellow taxpayers, so there are exemptions allowed by the Act. Now, this slide is kind of dense with information. Hopefully, you can see it. But first of all, the first $100,000 of property value is exempt from the surcharge for all residential and commercial properties. That will have, that will offer the greatest relief to the smallest houses and the smallest businesses. Low-income families and senior families with moderate income can elect to opt out completely. The values qualifying for opt-out are determined by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development and are adjusted annually to reflect actual housing value increases. If you can't read the numbers, I'm going to tell you what a couple of them are, particularly because they have just recently been upgraded from what I even have on this slide. A family of two would qualify for a low-income exemption if their income was $89,000 or less. A senior family of two could qualify for a moderate, moderate income exemption at $112,000 or less. If you make that amount or less than a senior household, you can opt out completely. Larger families have quantifiable, larger percentage dollar amounts for exemption qualification. You get an exemption, you fill out a form every year, and you send it into the town assessor. So what if after we pass it, we decide we don't like it? We can vote it out exactly the way we voted it in. You, town meeting, can bring it up as a warrant article, put it on the ballot. The ballot voters can decide to vote it up. None of the 189 communities that are currently CPA communities have ever opted out. That says something about the level of satisfaction that exists with the program. The CPA law requires for our local funds that we create four accounts. There's one each for open space and recreation combined, one for historical preservation, one for affordable housing, and one for a flexible fund. one for historical preservation, one for affordable housing, and one for a flexible fund. A minimum of ten percent must be put into each of those first three pots. You cannot say, oh, we want to give it all to recreation. You cannot do that. You must put ten percent into each program area. A flexible fund can be spent on any of those program areas depending upon the projects and proposals that have been received. Up to five percent may be spent on administrative costs such as making copies of reports, hiring a part-time administrative assistant to take minutes of meetings and do administrative-type details. So there is some small amount that's allowed to be spent on administrative expenses. It's very important to realize, all funds in each pot do not have to be spent every year. You can accumulate them for a number of years for a larger program. All funds stay in Burlington. They cannot be used for any other program areas. They cannot be clawed back or repurposed by the state. They are ours. So it's a small investment with a big state match. Why should we support it? Well, because, as I said, CPA provides steady dependable funds that allow Burlington to invest in the future that Burlington decides it wants to achieve in these targeted areas. Let's talk about what can be done in some of these four program areas. There's a list of things that can be done. I'm going to go through each one, but you can see some of them on the slide. I won't read them to you. One thing that I like particularly, since I'm on conservation, is purchasing undeveloped properties that abut conservation land. That can be done with this. We have three such properties that came from conservation in the last year. Two of them turned into cul-de-sacs, and one's going to be a single-family home. They're all going to be mega mansions instead of expanding a conservation area. As soon as the MWRA connection is completed, the Vine Brook Aquifer is going to be shut off completely as a drinking water supply for Burlington. What that means is that that entire area can become a much more open and accessible natural resource area with boardwalks, viewing platforms, walking paths, a perfect application for CPA funds. And there are many more opportunities to enrich the open space with CPA funds. What about some recreation-type projects? Well, we had quite a discussion tonight on a number of them. One, for example, was the seventy thousand dollars for a needs assessment and master plan for sports fields. Of course, CPA could have paid for that assessment, but that assessment's going to come back with numerous recommendations that could cost millions of dollars for improvements, modifications, expansions. CPA is perfectly adapted for that type of expense. As a matter of fact, in this very warrant, there's one point three million dollars, over one point three million, in projects that could have been funded by the CPA. What would that mean for the town budget? That one point three million, if it became funded by CPA, would not come from the town budget. That would be additional money left in the town budget. And not only that, but those one point three million dollars in projects would come at a thirty percent discount because the state would be paying for a chunk of them. So we'd get them done with fewer taxpayers' dollars. Another example I'd just like to point out was the TRW Park where we put in adult fitness equipment in a recent town meeting. That was a partnership between the town paid for part and Leahy Clinic paid for part. CPA can partner like that. We could pay for part from CPA and part from the town. CPA could partner with a business to fund a project. CPA can be used to partnership and leverage grants to fund large projects. And there are many other areas in recreation that we clearly could fund. A lot of the discussion tonight covered playgrounds and sports fields and things like that. Historical preservation projects that come to mind. We lost the Reverend Simon's House recently because there was no funds to try to buy it, preserve it, move it, anything like that. Saving historical buildings is exactly the sort of project that the CPA was meant for. The Town Museum, we heard tonight, has many artifacts and that were donated or acquired stuffed inside the museum, and they need funds to and they need funds and people and expertise to sort, evaluate, and catalog their value to the town. In affordable housing, Burlington has very little affordable, with a small "A" as it's called, housing. That's housing which is, its market value is actually truly affordable. We need more deed-restricted affordable housing. We just had an article a few minutes ago on buying a piece of property that's deed-restricted, keeping it deed-restricted. That is a CPA project. We could buy the remainder of those as they come up for availability. We could buy a property that isn't currently deed-restricted and make it deed-restricted. Now, too many small, usable houses are being torn down in this community and replaced with mega mansions that are by no means affordable. We can also help expand or preserve existing affordable housing. We clearly need senior affordable housing in this community. If you go to Bridgecrest and try to get an apartment, you got several-year waiting lists. You know, we could use more of that type of housing. So if we pass this, how will it actually work in our community? First, we have to form an official local CPA committee. The committee formation will require a bylaw, and town meeting has to approve that. So you have a say in the formation and the structure of such a CPA committee. The committee is required by the Act to have five members. One each sitting voting members from the Conservation Commission, the Historical Commission, the Recreation Commission, the Housing Authority, and the Planning Board. Those five must be on it. But we can have up to four additional optional members on the committee, and again, the town meeting will have a vote on that. The committee accepts proposals from anyone, from individuals, from committees, from boards, from departments, from businesses. The committee then evaluates those proposals and recommends them to town meeting. All projects must be approved by town meeting. You have a say in every single dollar that's spent from the Community Preservation Act or from our local fund. Let's go over the timeline of how this would happen if we were to pass it tonight, and it passed the ballot in November. We then have to form a bylaw, and that might come before the town meeting in January. The real estate surcharge would not begin till the next fiscal year, which would be July first of two thousand twenty-three. The first actual funds would go into our local CPA fund when the first quarterly bill goes out after July first. Once we have a committee in place and actual money in the pot, we can start accepting proposals. So it was early September of next year. The first proposals could be accepted, and they could be presented to town meeting perhaps as early as January twenty twenty-four. And as far as the state match goes, the state is going to look at the first full fiscal year. So July first, it starts. It ends June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. At that point, the state looks to see how much we put in and determines what our match will be. And the way the state works, the match actually goes into our local fund in November every year. We have the committee of people who are sitting down here front, and I really want to give a commendation to, we worked very hard to get to this point over a long period of time. We presented to every board and relevant committee in town that we could think of, and they have overwhelmingly voted to endorse this warrant article. There were thirteen official boards and commissions, and collectively, they voted sixty-five in favor, three against, and one abstain. And there were several non-governmental organizations as well that have clearly voiced their support for this proposal. The business community has been addressed. We had meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, and they recognize the benefits of the CPA, similar to the benefits we heard of the Sculpture Committee. They see open space as an amenity for their employees. Affordable housing benefits recruitment. It would be nice if employees might be able to actually afford to live in the community in which they work. Burlington competes with other neighboring communities for recruitment of employees. Amenities such as walking paths surrounding the workplace, those attract applicants. The ability to bike to work from Somerville or Arlington or Cambridge or Bedford without taking your life in your hands would be a major benefit to the businesses and to the community. So in summary, Burlington's already paying into this through fees at the Registry of Deeds, and will continue to do so. There's no end to that. Half the towns in Massachusetts, representing two-thirds of the population, are CPA towns, and none have ever opted out. The one point five percent surcharge is an investment that would have had a forty percent return if we had been in this program last year. It'll cost the average single-family homeowner currently seventy-five dollars a year, with low-income earners able to opt out. CPA is our opportunity to invest in Burlington with complete local control over the funds, complete local approval of the projects to preserve and improve the character of our community and its quality of life. I ask you to please vote tonight and let the voters decide in November. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Boyden. Ways and Means, their position on this?
Ways and Means voted eleven, one, excuse me, eleven to one to zero to support this. We felt that this CPA provides an opportunity to take on projects that we would normally not be able to accomplish during the, through the normal budgeting process. One dissenting vote felt that we would be allocating all of a sudden, you know, ten percent of the funds into those three major categories. We felt that we wouldn't typically normally do that in a regular fiscal year, and so it was a little bit out of line. Thanks.
Mr. Sagrino, did the Select Board vote on this? Or take a position?
A Select Board voted five, zero.
Thank you. Mr. Sinessi, did you vote on this?
Yes, capital budget went six to one on this. The wisdom was that, as Mr. Boyden highlighted, that there were a lot of items that we saw in these capital warrants that could, in theory, be used if they had gone through the CPA committee. So in a perfect world, this does have a lot of advantages to it.
Thank you. Any other committee take a position that I need to hear, that we need to hear about? Mr. Webb, land use.
Land use voted five, one, zero on this. Well, in support of the dissenting vote was, I think, he didn't think that it was the land use issue, but the rest of us did. So that was our vote, five, one.
Thank you. Yes, sir, to Sullivan.
Kevin Sullivan, Chairman of the Recreation Commission. We had a two, zero, one vote. Unfortunately, being on this committee, I had to abstain, so Recreation is excited if this does pass. There's so many great projects that could happen with the funds and take advantage of the state funding.
Mr. Rowe.
Sorry, planning board voted unanimously. Unanimously in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen.
The Conservation Commission voted unanimously in favor of this. They feel that there are some of the projects that could be saved and voted upon are the type of projects that could not be necessarily done under an annual budgeting process.
Thank you. Okay.
Scott Martin.
Mr. Warren and Mr. Martin, are you representing committees?
I am not.
I am, Mr. Moderator.
Say it again.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Martin, Chair of the General Bylaw Review Committee. We voted four, zero in favor of this article to allow the voters of the town to determine whether or not they wanted to become part of the CPA.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay, let's open it up to the body for questions. Mr. Warren, you had a question. One last.
I just wanted to add my support to this. I come from a neighborhood that a lot of us came up the hard way. A lot of us are unionized, teachers, nurses, police, and it really matters to us to give opportunities to the next generations, and I think the CPA fund is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. One last, Mr. Kasky.
Gary Kasky, Precinct Six. In two thousand and two, this project came up, and it was voted down in two thousand and two. This is basically a forced spending program for wants, not needs. Needs are the police station and the schools. Wants is something they want to put on the taxpayers. And to be quite frankly, it's not going to be seventy-five dollars. This speaker had mentioned that this is based on two thousand twenty-two. Well, the tax is going to be taken out in two thousand twenty-three, and people have to realize that every year, our tax rate goes up every year, which means every year that surcharge is going to go up. It's going to be at least a hundred dollars. And for the people in the million-dollar homes, it's going to be two hundred dollars or more. And people can say, well, they can afford it. Well, you know something? Just because people can afford it doesn't mean they want to spend their money on taxes. Now, gas prices are doubled in price. Food prices are up over ten percent. Heating fuel oil is out of sight. Inflation is out of sight. I don't think this is the time to be putting another burden of taxes on the taxpayers of this town. And to opt out of this program, you don't just opt out. You're going to have to go before a board and be approved. And who's to say that you're going to be approved? And at this point, I would say to vote this down, but because of the fact that there's so many connected people in town meeting with other people, it would probably pass. So I'm going to make a motion to postpone this until there's more information for people in the residents to know about this program, which you better think twice because it's going to, in the long run, you're going to be paying a lot more taxes. So I motion to postpone. Is there a second on the motion?
Second. Is there a second out there? Mr. Warren?
Not a second.
You know, second to this motion, it dies. Let's continue the discussion.
Good luck.
Mr. Moderator, may I address a couple of the points that were just made?
Go ahead, Mr. Boyden.
Thank you, sir. It never, I don't know, you mentioned, Mr. Kasky mentioned that it came before a vote in two thousand and two. I see no record of that at all. I asked the town clerk, and she said there was no
On the internet, I'll get it stated.
So I don't know what vote he's referring to. I was unable to document or support that.
Internet, it's right on the internet, on the state.
Opt-out, there's no board approval needed. It's the exact same process that we are using to opt-in. The only approval that's needed is town meeting says, let's put it on the ballot, and the people decide to opt out. And he talks about forcing taxes on taxpayers. That's why we let the taxpayers decide this. We can't decide it here because it is an increase in taxes that the taxpayers need to support for it to pass. So that's my comments.
Mr. buyer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kathy Byer, Precinct Two. I have a question and a comment. My first question goes back to a slide that you had and comments that you made that we are already paying into this. And then the rate that you were quoted was seventy-five dollars. Is that on top of what we've already been paying in? So I'm just confused about those two numbers.
Okay.
So that's my question.
Mr. Boyden.
Thank you. The seventy-five dollars is additional. It's separate from the amount we're paying into the Community Trust Fund, the statewide trust fund. We've been paying that. We will be continuing to be paying that. And that is every community in Massachusetts, and that money funds only those member communities who can take something out.
Okay, thank you. That's what I had thought, but I wanted to confirm it. And then my comment is, this becomes pretty simple to be able to decide tonight that we want to put this in front of the voters. We aren't discussing all of the merits. I thank you for a very clear presentation. You went through one piece after the other, answering questions as they arose in my mind. But I think for this body to decide that we would put it on the ballot is a very painless vote for them tonight, and I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Heiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Heiler, Precinct 6. I was the lonely no vote on Ways and Means. So I'll just give a few additional points to consider. First off, I would say, yes, we are voting to just put it on the ballot. We're not voting yes or no. But I think it's pretty clear by putting it on the ballot, we're making a statement that town meeting is supporting this. So it really is saying more than just we want to have it on the ballot. I wanted to attach a few numbers to this just so that people are making an informed decision. Quite frankly, if you're in support of it afterward, after all this, and you know, more power to you. I have no problem with that. This surcharge will yield about $1.6 million of additional taxes. And if the match is 40%, which it does vary from year to year, match would add an additional about 600K. So there'd be a total of $2.2 million going to this, into these four funds that Mr. Boyden mentioned each year. So on average, we're going to be decreasing. So our levy in FY '22 is 130 million. Our total spending was about 160 million. So the 1.6 million of additional taxes is adding 1% to our budget in terms of taxes that we're raising additionally. Changing the percentage is a challenge. It does require going back to the town again or a vote. It's not something a town meeting can just change on its own. So it does lower our ability to quickly respond to financial changes. If we have a pandemic, for instance, and we decide we need to cut spending, this is not an area where we will be able to cut spending without going onto a townwide ballot and getting approval. So it's very sticky money. It's difficult to change this. And that, quite frankly, is part of the point of this, is they want to make it hard to change. The idea is to create dedicated money that will go into these areas no matter what. If that's what you want, then this is an excellent way to do that. If it's not what you want, it does reduce our flexibility. And for me, it was the earmarking of money for very specific things that was the real sticking point here. So just to be clear, there'll be 2.2 million with the state match, assuming 40% going in each year. So in each of the three areas, requires a 10% minimum of that money must be spent on average every year. Yes, it can be accumulated, but it's got to average. It's going to average out to an additional $220,000 in each of the three mentioned areas. Open space, historic resources, community housing. Just to put that in perspective, the open space, and this is talking about operating budgets now. Our rec department is 1.9 million, not terribly out of line. Historic resources, our historic budget, historic commission budget is $10,000 right now. So we're talking about throwing in an extra 220K in historic spending each year. That's a huge change in priorities. It may be what you want, but it is a huge change and need to make sure that's actually best kind of increase you're looking for each year. Community housing, we don't have an annual budget for that. It's funded through warrant articles, as we've seen with money coming from the trust fund typically. But again, we need to think about, what is our actual goal here? We have, right now, we have 13% affordable housing. 40B requires us to be a 10% minimum, so we're well above the minimum. Maybe we want to increase that. Maybe we're happy with where it is. But I think the point is, we haven't really defined a goal there. So I think it's important for us to understand. It's nice to say we should have more affordable housing. We want seniors to be able to stay here forever. And those all, I think, subjectively are good goals. But in the end, we need to put numbers to it, because this act will put numbers to it. Do we want to spend a minimum of 220,000 a year on average for increasing our affordable housing? Maybe we do, maybe we don't. If we look at the three areas in general, if we assume we spend it equally, just to pick a number, that's 730,000 each year that we're putting into these areas on average. Again, maybe that's what we want to do. I haven't seen a clear affordable housing plan. For me, 13% affordable housing seems like we're in a good place. I don't know that we need to dramatically increase that. Maybe you feel different. So Mr. Boyden mentioned a fairly large number that could have been used from warrant articles this year and been funded by CPA. In a previous analysis that is set around, the average was more about 200,000 a year of warrant articles that might be CPA appropriate in terms of past spending that we want to do. Now, again, if you want to increase that 200,000 average, say we vastly underspent in these areas because we do have a tendency to focus on the operating budget. And we want to go from 200K to 2.2 million, you know, a tenfold increase. Maybe you're saying that our spending has been off by a factor of 10 in these areas. And that could actually be the case, but make sure you're consciously making that decision. It is a huge increase and a huge change in our priorities. Something that wasn't really talked about in Mr. Boyden's talk that I'd like to make clear is what can this money be spent on? You mentioned the areas. The thing to realize is it cannot be spent on operating budgets and it cannot be spent on maintenance. So the spending that, so effectively what that means is spending must be new spending. So it can't go towards maintaining, you know, historic house. It has to, you know, because it can't go to maintenance. It has to go to something. It can go towards the current rec department budget. It has to go to new spending. So it could go to making a new park and so forth. But it can't go towards, you know, typical rec department spending that's happening now in their operating budget. So that's a very important distinction to be aware of. This is truly new spending. It's not just a convenient way to fund things that we're currently spending on. And finally, I would say in the budget process with Ways and Means, we spend a lot of time talking about levies and targets and percentage increases. And we're usually arguing about an extra quarter percent. Schools argue, you know, we want, you know, that extra quarter percent going towards our budget increase. And in one else swoop, we're throwing in an extra one and a half percent here. So this is a very large increase relative to the kind of things that we have done in the past. So in the end, this is a lot of earmarking and commitment to get an additional, hopefully, 640,000 from the state or so. If you think our priorities have been way off and we've been grossly underspending in all these areas and you want to do this new spending and be required to do this new spending every year, then this is exactly the right thing to do. If you're not comfortable with that, which I was not, then then I wouldn't vote for it, and I didn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heiler. Online, Ms. Goldsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jennifer Goldsmith, Precinct 7. I just want to say that I do agree with Mr. Heiler and Mr. Kasky. So I'm not going to touch base on those points that I had that they've already brought up. But I just want another point to be made that, along with the exemptions, renters are not included in this. So when it goes up to an election, last election, I think we had 2,000 plus people that showed up. We have this on an election. People that aren't exempt, whether that be from low income to seniors to renters, they approve this for it to go forward. And then the taxpayers are paying not only additional taxes. Our water bill is going to continue to increase. I just don't feel like this is the right fit for the town. But I do feel like there should be some type of discussion. But I feel like just saying, oh, just put it on the ballot. I feel like that's kind of not really looking at the whole. So for me, I'm against this. Not, I'm not up for, you know, additional taxes. The package looks pretty, but when you get down to the nitty gritty, honestly, I don't feel that it's the best for the town. That's just my opinion. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cohen.
Mr. Heiler made some very well thought out comments, but a couple of them brought up a couple of points I'd like to make to you. The first is that
Yeah, say who you are.
I'm a committee member. Yes, Larry Cohen, Department of CPA Committee. I'm sorry. And a couple of points. The first is that that expenses, annual expenses that could be funded, there are some that can be funded. I'll give you an example. The CPA law makes the distinction that it can be used for preservation as opposed to routine maintenance. So easiest way to explain that is if you have some windows that are drafty and you want to enhance the energy conservation part of it and you wanted to replace them, that would not qualify for CPA funds. If, for example, the windows, it was documented that they were leaking and causing damage, that's a place where the preservation of the affordable housing would be in danger. And then the project to replace the windows would be qualified. The second point I would make is that we spent, this body has approved $1.3 million in recreation projects. And to the extent that those would have been funded out of CPA, then it could be backed out of whatever process that you have at regular town meeting. And the last thing is, if there is a need and there is a, God forbid, another pandemic and you wanted to cut spending and put a hold on everything, there is nothing that says that town meeting has to approve the money that's been collected. It can simply stay there in those accounts until such a time as town meeting deems that it wants to spend on any particular project. Thank you.
Mr. Boyden.
Thank you, sir. Couple of points were raised that I'd like to rebut. It was raised that, you know, election, the last election, only 2,000 voters showed up. We purposely picked a more major election. We tried to put it on the presidential election in 2020, but we backed out because of the whole CPA, the whole COVID issue that was going on at the time. We wanted to keep town meeting to a minimum. So now we're putting it on a congressional election purposely to get as many town people to vote and register their opinion as possible. Money spent through the CPA does not compete with the operating budget. And I think that's a very important part. Not one penny comes out of the operating budget onto these CPA funded projects. If anything, it offers some relief to the operating budget by things that would have been funded there, funded elsewhere. And yes, there is more money perhaps going to be coming into the CPA than has traditionally been spent on articles and warrant articles. But grander projects can be envisioned, greater things that would affect the character of the community and the quality of life. Things like that whole Vinebrook Aquifer over, you know, converting it to a major attraction for the community. Things like, there's a boardwalk that's in in Bedford that was funded by the CPA. It's a half a mile long on Davis Road. It is gorgeous. And it is parallel to a road very much like our Blanchard Road. There's wetlands on the side that precluded any kind of a sidewalk from being built. They put a half a mile long boardwalk in there that allows accessibility safely for pedestrians and bicycles. Can you imagine one of those, a whole mile long up that street might cost us $2 million? That type of thing, that town meeting is not going to be able to fund every year. Things of that magnitude and that vision, you know, repairing all the sports fields in towns. That's going to be several million dollars. There's, you know, a number of projects that this would be able to allow us to envision that perhaps we don't have the ability to do so when we're competing with operating expenses that this town needs. And operating expenses as expenses of, you know, gasoline and all these other things, operating expenses are going to go up as well. So I just wanted to make those points against some of the things that I have heard. Thank you.
Mr. Morrie. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bruce Morrie, Precinct 1. Couple of questions, I guess, through you to the presenter, Town Meeting Member Boyden. Describe to me this category, I don't like the description, of flexible fund. And who decides on that? Is it the CPA committee? And who is the final decider of these funds being dispersed? Is it us, town meeting? Is my first question. Please answer that. Thank you. Mr. Boyden.
Thank you. Yes, answered your question. Town meeting approves every penny that comes out of the CPA. And the decision as to, you know, what projects will be recommended to town meeting is entirely within the local CPA committee, which won't be these people. It'll be those five I talked about and four others, which may or may not be some of these fine people. But that is their responsibility is to vet all of those programs. And even making determination of whether a proposal is CPA eligible or not is not done at the state level. It's done at the local committee level.
Thank you. Second question, if I may. Go ahead. The whole state reimbursement, I have an issue with that. And may not be able to ask, answer, maybe still town council will have to. Does the state commit to doing this every year to the communities that have CPA? Is my first question. And then I have a follow up depending on the answer.
Yes, the state is part of the act. The act requires that the state take all the money that's collected, divide by the number of communities and the dollars in each fund and proportionally distribute it.
Okay, no follow up. Thank you. Online, Mr. Campbell, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to further point out about the upcoming election. So in our last 2018 congressional election, we had 69.9% of voters. It's over 11,000 voters who came out. So if we're looking at a majority of voters, we will have that for this election to be able to vote this up or down. In terms of, I think we're getting a little confused over maintenance. In the specific things about the CPA, you can do rehabilitation and restoration. And so things like that we have already voted on in warrant articles, like the restoration of some of our fields would be able to be covered under this. And then lastly, this is not something that has to be spent every year. And so spending this past budget season on Ways and Means, we've heard a lot about things that people would like to want to have. Yes, there are wants, but then there are also needs. And when they're trying to think about the character and what our vision is for Burlington, this is one of those great things where we can really start to tap into our true creativity and say, what do we really want Burlington to look like, feel like and be? And utilize these funds, which every town that has entered it has not exited because they've seen the benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Next time, please state your name and precinct before you start speaking. Online, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Martin, Precinct 7. A couple of reminders. This body here that we are sitting in is voting to put this on the ballot. And it is the objective, or it will be the objective of the CPA committee, this yes CPA Burlington Committee. objective of the CPA committee, the, this yes CPA Burlington Committee to sell this acceptance of this act to all of the voters. And if they do their job right, there will be about ten thousand people that get out to vote. And they will vote one way or the other. Now, it's, we are not necessarily sitting here voting tonight for this article to accept the CPA. We are voting to put it on the November ballot. If we wait another year, that means we lose out on a bunch of money that the state is willing to give us if we accept it. So we're pushing out the acceptance of money and I've heard three times so far tonight that we accept money gladly. Well, it's obvious that we don't want to accept money uh, for this article. My next point is that that the the want and need. There are lots of things that we spend money on that are really, you could argue that they are wants. There are towns in this state which would love to have a police department. They hire the state police to do their policing. What do we need a police department for? We could do the same thing. That would save us ten million dollars. We wouldn't need to have this CPA. We could afford to do all of the things that we wanted to with the budget that the police department has. But we as a town have decided that we need a police department in-house to do our policing. Well, here we have the opportunity to make forty cents on every dollar that we, we put into this. Now, you have to understand that we are the people that are selling our houses. Every house that's bought in this town has, is money putting into this trust fund. And then on top of that, some extra little bit of money is put into the fund by all of us. Well, if I had a 401K and I put in a dollar and my employer said, I'm going to give you forty cents for every dollar you put in, it wouldn't take me very long to figure out that that was a really smart decision. I'm in favor of putting this on the ballot and letting the voters decide. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Yes, sir, here.
Hi, thank you. Uh, Dan Collins, precinct six. I'm a little concerned um, with uh, additional taxes that's already been talked about, but I'm also concerned with uh, how this might hit the low income residents. For example, the good portion of low income residents are renters. So the people who own those homes that people are renting, I would imagine they're, they now increase the rents on those low income residents. Um, and I'm also concerned with maybe the process. Maybe you could answer this question. How does the low income resident apply to be exempt? How are they notified? How arduous is that process to become exempt? How often do they have to do that process? That's what I think.
Mr. Boyden, please.
Uh, thank you. Uh, it's an important question. Um, first of all, renters as well as homeowners, if they're low income, they can opt out for paying this. Well, they're not paying real estate tax, so I guess they have nothing to opt out of. My mistake. And the um, process involves an annual application to the assessor the same manner and requirements that would be for any other income based exemption that the town offers. You would have to show some documentation of your income. Uh, whether it's a social security uh, statement or a income tax, you know, a statement. You do have to document your income. If it, uh, the assessor looks at it and decides that it meets the requirements, uh, the definitions of income restrictions on the uh, in the CPA, it passes. It's all internally decided.
Thank you, Mr. Boyden. Mr. Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, precinct six. Twenty years ago, I approached the town administrator with the CPA and had gotten the necessary signatures for a special town meeting. Uh, they were not too happy at the time and he had asked me to pull uh, the request for the special town meeting and, and opt for uh, guarantee if he, that he would probably fund some of the areas that, that were concerning of mine, some other people. Uh, that didn't materialize. And at the time, it was a hundred percent match, not forty percent. So a lot of towns at the time, we would have had a significant amount of uh, money. That being said, um, some of the other concerns, and I will say there are great points on both sides of this. I'm not, I, I'm not here tonight to tell you one way or another what, you know, whether your decision or your personal choice uh, on whether you want this or not uh, is valid or not, because that's a, that's a very personal choice as far as a taxpayer. What my concern is as a town meeting member is I was voted in by what, three hundred and fifty some odd people, four hundred at best? It wasn't to make a choice for them on their taxes. For me, this is a responsibility for us as a town meeting is to pass that judgment on to the taxpayer. Um, there are certain issues that I feel very strongly about that I don't believe a fallen purview of, of us as town meeting members because we feel that someone voted us in. In actuality, every April, what do we get? Fifteen percent best registered voters come out to vote? So to claim that somehow we have the authority, yes, we have the authority to vote this down, not allow it to go to the taxpayers. I think that would be an absolute disgrace. We're not here to sit there and oppose uh, or to tell the taxpayers of this community that they're too stupid to vote for something when it comes to their own taxes. If, if this goes onto a ballot, then we'll have committees that will actually put their best foot forward and, and the hopes that they will in the way of CPA committee, uh, vote in favor of it and whoever is going to be the opposing party will pitch theirs. But this really does belong in the hands of the taxpayer, does not belong in the hands of us tonight. We should be voting this in, allow the chips to fall where they may and allow all the merits to be heard and let the taxpayers, they're smart enough. They really are. Don't insult them by not allowing this to go for their vote. They should have a say in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cormier. Uh, online, Mr. Fustachi.
All the question. Excuse me?
Not going to move the question yet. Too many questions. Many hands out there.
Is it non-debatable? Oh, I can't see any hands. Sorry. I thought it was non-debatable.
Six Highland, online.
Mr. Moderator, point, point of information, is it non-debatable to call the question? You said that the other night. And then people vote as to whether or not they want to.
Moderators have certain leeway in, in accepting that motion.
Thank you.
Sorry. If there's a lot of people looking to still talk about something, I'm not going to accept the motion to, to uh, to move the question. Mr. Fustachi. Your hand, your hands up. Move.
Can I?
Is that online?
Okay, can I, can I speak? Mimi Bix Highland, precinct one. I'm sorry that I cannot turn my video on, so you'll just have to hear my voice. Um, I'm um, jumping in because I want to um, also uh, share with town meeting members that I strongly support putting this uh, getting this on the ballot to let voters uh, decide. I have listened to Mr. Boyden speak in a number of different settings explaining to different constituents what the CPA, CPA fund is about. Um, and um, I have listened to him feel numerous questions um, from folks who are both inclined towards supporting it as well as from folks who are strongly against it. And my takeaway after listening to this issue being debated over and over is that really at the heart of this is a values conflict. Uh, the, the concerns are raised in different ways, but fundamentally it seems to me that folks who do not want to see this put on the ballot are concerned about monies going to things like open space, historic preservation, community housing and land for recreational use. I have heard folks who do not want to see this on the ballot talk about how historically um, historic preservation has never received such large funds. And suddenly if the CPA fund was to, if Burlington was to belong to it, um, this uh, entity would start getting monies. So I think, you know, it behooves us all to be honest about what is at play here. It's about our values and where we want monies going. And as Mr. Cormier was saying, it is not for those of us in this meeting talking tonight to make that decision. It is the decision of the voters. Um, so thank you.
Mr. Waddell. Oh, excuse me. I was told Doug I'd, I'd recognize him. Mr. Davidson. I'll get to you, Mr. Waddell.
Doug Davidson, precinct two. Um, as a member of Ways and Means, I voted for this for the reason of putting it on the ballot. Uh, as a voter and a precinct two town meeting member or as a taxpayer, I'm opposed to this at this point. And so it is a little bit of a challenge because on the one hand, we're being asked to vote, to put it on the ballot so everybody can make a decision. I'm all for it. That's why I supported it. On the other hand, we just saw a list of all the committees that approved this as if that meant that we approved the CPA or approved of it. And so when it goes before the voters in the fall, if this body approves it, it, this vote is going to also be reported as if town meeting uh, supports this. That I have a problem with. Um, so I want to make it very clear that I'm happy to let the voters decide, but I'm opposed to this at this point. Um, all of the projects sound great. We can afford to do any of those things. Uh, you know, we can raise taxes and pay for anything. We could build a dome stadium if we wanted to. We can do anything we'd say is important to us as a community. If we need a one mile long boardwalk along Blanchard Road, let's put that before the voters and let's see if they support it because I don't think they would. If they would, we'd be doing it. There are plenty of people in this town that would be excited about that. And if they thought they could get it paid for, we'd be talking about it in Ways and Means and it would be before this bond. So the projects that we may be able to fund, and yes, it'd be like getting a forty percent discount. That forty percent I've known we would be spending on other items that we wouldn't necessarily choose to fund otherwise. So I'm opposed to the CPA, but I'm happy to let the voters decide. I fear that they will vote in favor of it because it's going to be sold very hard.
Mr. Waddell.
Hi, Dave Waddell, precinct one. Uh, first, I'd like to apologize to Bill Bovin. I roughed him up a couple of weeks ago at an information session. It was a great information session, Bill. I'm sorry for that. Um, I usually don't talk at town meetings. I do most of my homework upfront and I typically don't think I can add much to the conversation. Um, but what we have before us is probably the most substantial change to our town financial governance in the last twenty years since I've been here. So I figured I'd talk a little bit about it. Um, I personally believe, as I think many of you do, that our town does a great job in terms of planning budget and fiscal management. We have an excellent school system, a well-funded police, fire departments, very good infrastructure, a variety of parks, recreation program, sculpture, sculpture park, you name it. We've got a lot of it. Um, you know, we're voting the list tonight. What we do, this is what we do. This is what we pay money for. Um, as the town's legislative body and the financing improving authority, we have never once, not once in the twenty years I've been in town meeting, voted one of these projects down. We support these things wholeheartedly as a town meeting. Okay? We recognize the importance of our community, responsibly support these endeavors and do all of this within the existing system. Okay, just this session, we did the, the barn, the shed, money for sidewalk, block sculptures, park, treehouse. Um, and then all of that is, as Doug has said, is within our current tax levy. And there's, is there room for improvement to do more? Of course. But our ten three sources are not infinite and this system that we currently have does work and it works well. Our current capital system is a full system. If there's a need, it's brought forward, reviewed against other competing needs and approved and rejected. The CPA is a bit different. With the CPA, we're going to generate a brand new revenue stream and push it at a small section of our town activity. The projects are ambiguous at this point. The only thing certain is that every year we will generate a pipeline of money that would need to be spent on a narrow segment of our town activity. Backwards, bring forth the projects that need to be done and fit those projects into the, into the priority system. Don't generate the spend and go find projects to do. That just smacks bad governance. Hello? Oh, here we go. A few final comments. Just because somebody else is doing something doesn't mean you should do it too. My mother told me that. It's not advice. Don't, don't be distracted by the state matching funds. That's a very small piece of this discussion and not one to base a decision on. The state from the beginning of time has been in the business of redistributing wealth. That's what they do. Maintenance, upkeep, operations, all that responsibility still falls on the town side, not the CPA side. There is risk that CPA projects will further load our tax lift. Finally, don't neglect your responsibility. We are elected by our precincts to make difficult decisions about how to govern our town. Not to pass a buck back to the voter, make a decision that we can't or won't. Our town system of financial governance, it's not broken. There's no need to implement the CPA levy override or push monies projects that haven't been defined. We can't currently do without our existing rule. Simply vote no. There's nothing to fix. We have a great town with excellent financial management and solid financial foundation. If you want to keep preservation and preserve this, we can help you with that.
Online, Ms. Manny.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rose Manny, precinct six. I'm just curious as to how the residents will be educated on the CPA. Who will be in charge of that? How does that work?
Important question. Uh, that's a very important question. Um, we have divided our approach to this into two phases tonight. Hopefully will be the completion of phase one, which is to get it through town meeting. Then we will start implementing what we call phase two of our, of our program to get it through the ballot. And we will try to educate the, the population just as we tried to educate town meeting members through our meetings with town meeting members and the boys and commissions in town. Um, we may very well be meeting with some of those boys and commissions another time to get their clear vote on supporting the CPA and not supporting, putting it on the ballot. Uh, we intend to address any kind of public means we can to get the message out. We have a group of people down here that have been working hard and are ready to keep going for, to the finish line in November. And we intend to make sure that we educate as best as we can. We need to if we want to get their vote. We deserve your information.
Mr. Monaco.
Battery? Lindsay, Lindsay.
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 Hello? He didn't turn it on. He fooled me. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bar.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank Monaco, Precinct Four. I'll try to be as brief as I can, but it's hard. First of all, we've heard some incredibly good debate here tonight. I, I really applaud the body for some thoughtful and helpful information. We do need to vote on this, whether you like it or not. And my view is we should put it on the ballot. And the reason to put it on the ballot is because the kinds of things that, that Mr. Waddell said, you know, the, the, the negative side of this is going to have to push pretty hard if you want it defeated at the ballot box. But I do think this is a big enough issue that people, I go, anyone that comes out to vote is going to have a reason to vote on this. And I do think you'll see the sentiment of the town, and I honestly don't know what it is. But here's a point of view to consider for the voter, and that I do think it should be on the ballot. This is the form of earmarking, and Mr. Eiler is absolutely right. And whether you look at it as a push finance or a pull finance, depends on your point of view. I look at it as investing in things that typically we can't invest in, because the money isn't there when you have the opportunity, or it's, or it doesn't even make it to the warrant, because it's too big. And so this is a way of investing deeper in the culture, the community, and the infrastructure of Burlington for things that you might call discretionary, but they're value, they're high value. And CPA has been successful in communities that don't necessarily have a lot of money, but they do things with it that are very high value, particularly in the area of land acquisition, property acquisition, that they make something out of. And I've seen this in other communities. So I am in favor of it, but I think the jury's out. I think it's a mistake to not put it on the ballot. And I completely understand what, what Mr. Davidson said. You get the upper hand when you vote for it, but it's up to the people, like the arguments that have been made to get the message out, and I think it will. And I think Mr. Cormier is right. The voter is not stupid. They're going to think about it, so give them a chance. Thank you.
Ms. Whittington, online.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. ZY, uh, Precinct Five. Uh, I was, I just have a quick question. I was reading the Becca Barnes. It says cities and towns that join CPA place a surcharge on local real estate taxes up to 3%. Um, our warrant article calls for 1.5%. So is this a rate fixed? And if we're, we're going to increase the rate in the future to 2%, 3%, 4%? Who and what determine the rate? Thank you.
Thank you. That rate is fixed by the vote in November. That will be specifically on the ballot at 1.5%. To change it, you've got to go through the same process. You've got to go through town meeting and get it back on the ballot. I will point out that a number, uh, probably between one and two dozen communities of the 189 that are CPA members started with a certain percentage and voted to change it. They voted to increase it, often up to 3% once they saw how well the program was working and how much they liked it. So it can be changed, and it is done through the ballot process.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Kasky.
Gary Kasky, Precinct Six. I just wanted to correct Mr. Boyden on one thing. If you, if you go on the state website and typing this, the Community Preservation Act, you will see in writing that in the year 2002, this was brought up in Burlington, and it was a failed vote. I don't like to look like I'm being, not telling the truth. So go on, get your computer out, go on the website, and you'll find out that what I've told you was the truth.
Mr. Kasky, we've never doubted that you tell the truth. Thank you.
Well, you didn't, but he did.
Adam, Adam Sinessi, Precinct One, move the question.
I think we're now. Thank you, Adam. All those in favor of moving the question? Okay? All those opposed to moving the question? Thank you.
Forty, forty-seven, four. Two against.
There being a clear two-thirds majority, the question has been moved. So let's get this to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Thirty-eight, four. Eleven against.
There being a clear majority? Has, has tonight been a long night? Okay, this is a vote on the question. Here we go, and the question passes. Thank you very much. Article thirty-three has been withdrawn. Article thirty-four is an amendment to the general bylaw. Article five has been moved seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The bylaw review committee voted five, zero, zero for this article. This is a, um, quick article. It was brought to our, the attention of the GBRC that, um, there were some, a conflict in the five committees that have recording clerks, that use recording clerks, part-time recording clerks. And that the wording within the individual definitions of what the, that committee does says, states, states that the committee sets the labor rate or hourly rate for that recording clerk. And that is not correct. That it is, that hourly rate is set by, uh, the town's contracted, uh, contracts for the part-time recording clerks.
Questions on this article? So you know, let's vote on it. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thirty-eight, four. Zero against.
There being an overwhelming majority in favor, Article thirty-four passes. Which brings us to Article thirty-five. I think that's appropriate. It's quarter of eleven. This article deserves more than taking it up from our all beat. And so I'll accept a motion to adjourn until seven-thirty on Wednesday. All in favor? Opposed? You don't care about the online vote? Did I say that loud? I'm sorry.